We have a very special guest with us here tonight. I'm going to ask all the planning board members to join me here in the front and then we're going to call back, call up Jack Kelly for our presentation.
All right.
Our special guest tonight is Jack Kelly, who has given seventeen years of service to the planning board. He was on the planning board from 1984 to 1994 and then also from 2012 to 2019. And I know Jack has had a huge impact on all of us. I know he had an enormous impact on me. When I first decided to run for planning board, Paul called me up and asked me if I'd be willing to run. And shortly thereafter, I found out Jack was running and I said, "Oh, no. I don't stand a chance now." But we worked together and he's been a mentor and a wonderful member of the planning board and he's sorely missed. But we're very happy for you that you're enjoying your retirement as well. So, we got you this great chair. Have a seat, Jack.
Okay. You want to get in my car?
Range delivery.
Yeah, okay. Does it cheer? Does it cheer?
How's it feel? I would give the other members of the board a chance if they'd like to say a few words.
Sure. Well, I'd like to thank Jack for getting me interested in the planning board in the beginning. I can remember him calling me up and I was on the Board of Appeals at the time, actually. And I didn't really know too much about the planning board, but Jack explained it to me and mentored me for a good many years. As the years went on, we became, I think, good friends and good, what do we call that? Good chess players, I guess maybe you might want to say.
Strategists.
Good strategists, right. And I do want to say one thing for sure, and that is although Jack and I might not have agreed on everything, I know that what Jack was doing was the same thing I was doing and all the rest of the members of the board and the other boards in town and that is working for the best interests of Burlington as they saw fit. And I'd like to thank Jack for having done that.
Sure. Thanks, Jack. I'd like to thank you for the time that you spent on the planning board as well as my cohort here saying your mentorship, you know, always listening to what you had to say there to provide my input. So, I appreciate you, all your time and with the last name like that, I mean, you know, who can go wrong? Thank you.
Jack, I'd like to thank you for your many service, many years of service to the town. As a newer member, it's something that's very impressive and something to look up to. So, thank you for that and providing that example for one of the newer members on the board. And lastly, I just say I'm going to miss your Bruins updates this spring when we hit the playoff time, but I'll have to check my phone.
You get that on your phone, doesn't it?
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Jack, I just wanted to wish you, you know, an enjoyable retirement. I do have some pretty big shoes to fill, but I look forward to the opportunity and thank you so much for your service.
Don't give me the microphone. Jack and I, I was noting to somebody today, the first time I saw Jack, there was a rezoning down at the end of Ray Avenue and it was for a parking rink at that time and they needed two acres, but they were asking for ten acres because they wanted to use that as a way to get more property rezoned. And so, that was approximately 1970. And so, I was interested, went down, said my two cents worth, and then this guy gets up and he starts talking and I said, "Jesus, he really knows what he's talking about." And I said, "Who is he?" You know, I'd been around for ten years, never seen him and so forth, but I said, "Good on you." I said, "You know, I'm very glad." And so, we've known each other both socially and in the planning board and the one thing that I may not forgive him for, I took full retirement in 1990 on April 1st and about the middle of March, I got a telephone call and it's Kelly and he says, "There's a guy I don't think is going to run for..." I said, "No, no, 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 no. No, you don't, Jack." But as you can see, in all ways, he was very persuasive, but it's a great both work and social time that we've had over those long ti- long time.
So, Jack, I think I first met Jack when I got on the Board of Selectmen probably about thirty years ago. I think you were on the planning board at that time, right?
Eighty-four.
Yeah, we were on, well, that's where I was about ninety when I was ninety-nine-one.
That was there, yeah.
Yeah, so and I, and I've, and I remember back then how much, you know, how much ambition he had for the job and he just loved it and you could tell that when you talked to him. So, it was one of my introductions to the town and the town's politics and I've enjoyed more being on a board with you and being able to see firsthand the love you had for this town because I know that's the love I grew up with in this town and it fit right in with my way of thinking and I just, you know, I can't say that I've worked with anybody that has brought more knowledge, more integrity and more thoroughness to the job. And I thank you for that because I know this town has been made a much better place because of you and I truly believe that. And you're missed, believe me, so.
Does Jack get to say anything? Jack gets to say something, but first we have, we'd like to call up Ken Gordon, who had a few words to say on a presentation. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you very much, Barbara. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Jack. Take a few minutes to thank you for the contributions you've made to the town and also the contributions you've made to help me become a better state representative. And you know that you were there from the very first day, right before the first day that I ran for state rep and then became state rep when I came to Burlington and I tried to figure out, okay, who are the people who really have worked the hardest, the most, the hardest and the most effectively for the town of Burlington because those are the people I need to meet right away. And that very first day, I met you, Jack, I met Paul and several others of you as well and learned a lot about the inner workings of the government here in Burlington and continue to learn from you. And I appreciate all of the advice and the guidance that you've all given me all these years. So, thank you very much for that, Jack. It's just been a pleasure to work with you on various capacities through the years. So, I've got a citation from the House of Representatives. It reads, it's from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives. I tell you what, when I was... None of that. I've got my glasses. You were going to hand me yours. You're always very helpful when I can do this. "Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Jack Kelly in recognition of your seventeen years of dedicated service to the Burlington Planning Board. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors it stated the sixth day of February 2020 at the State House, signed by Robert DeLeo, the Speaker of the House, and offered by me, Ken Gordon, your state representative." Jack, thank you very much.
Want me to say something? Joe, you want to let me speak or?
Because people on TV need to hear.
There is...
The whole time that you watch this, it's more than five seconds.
Yeah, there's one picture which we have to get because seventeen years of planning board, twenty-nine years of town meeting, somebody shared a lot of me for those evenings. So, I think my wife of fifty-six years should be one of those pictures.
Best to thank you for sharing Jack with us all these thirteen minutes.
Who told you I'd do that?
Yes, of course I share.
Should we get everybody back up?
Yep. I'm trying to think of a couple of things that I did in town that were good. From the planning board, we were, who was Paul was on the board, we brought in the first town planner, Colette Benier, then followed by Terry Zoll, followed by Tony, who brought Kristen in, who was eighteen years?
Also mine is.
Somewhere in that neighborhood. The other smartest thing I did was getting Mountain Road dead-ended.
Yes.
I wasn't on the planning board at the time, but it was something worthwhile and it's saved a lot of problems in that neighborhood of Mountain Road. Other than that... Jack, I'll tell you one more thing that was very important. When the big boxes came around sniffing around Burlington, we are going to need a lot of money for all of our infrastructure and everything and thank you for being interested in us, but we're looking for first-class office buildings and you set the tone for what we have now. Best ammunition fighting them, Terry Zoll. She was the one that said, "We need campus development, not big boxes with a bunch of driveways." The planning board at that time. Anyway.
Thank you so much, Jack. I expected a long speech.
Yeah.
Jack, take a seat. Jack, take a seat. Seat of honor. There you go.
My wife had the seat.
Yeah, my wife does.
Actually, feel standby, isn't that great?
I stole a line from someone.
A little bit to the chair, to the level of the chair floss, please. There you go. Hey, look at my head. Look at my head. Or else, please, look at my head. Smile, smile, smile. Bill, can you go to your left? There you go. All right, three, two, one.
Thank you for Photoshop that's following.
Thank you, thank you so much, Jack. Some volunteers for a parrot chair?
What did you say?
I'm in the web.
I like poetic writing.
Mimi, unless you want to. Mimi, can you give this to Jack? Thank you. Have a good meeting, folks.
All right, thank you, everyone, and we are now going to start the regular meeting. Again, it's the planning board meeting of February 6, 2020, and we're going to start with a few announcements.
I put it right there. I told them we're going to deliver.
Deliver.
Yep.
I told them that.
We have the economic development director, if you want to do that next.
The four announcements, okay. All right. Okay, we're going to delay announcements because our new development coordinator is here. I'd like, sorry, economic development director, along with our town manager, Paul Sagarino, and we're very excited to have you onboard.
Just an administrator.
Please take it away.
Thank you so much for having us here tonight. It is a little bit anticlimactic because I know that Melissa's pretty quick and she's already met with five of you personally and I know that she saved the best for last, Joe and Bill, so hopefully you guys can reach out to Melissa.
Tracking, yep.
And first of all, I just wanted to thank the planning board. You know, your support was very important in helping us get this position passed at town meeting. I previously thanked Jack for that as well. He helped us out at a lot of public meetings when we were working towards explaining why we wanted this position. And also Kristen made a great speech on town meeting floor that I think is very impactful in having us, the town, support this position for us. So, I just wanted to thank you guys for that. And again, I came here to make an introduction, but she's, I know that, you know, five of you have already met her. So, for the rest of our, for Bill and Joe, Melissa, it was a top choice of our search committee, unanimous. We feel very lucky with that we got the best person we possibly could get for the job. Just a little bit about Melissa, she's been in charge of economic development in Lexington since 2011. Prior to that, she worked for the city of Somerville and did a lot of work on assembly. And prior to that, she was out in California, San Diego, doing similar type planning work. She has a master's in planning from the University of Michigan and I just wanted to bring her here and introduce her to the planning board and please do reach out with any thoughts, ideas, information, anything you would like to share with her. I know she's trying to get her arms around about what our, our community is all about and what our residents want to see in the future and I know she's interested in speaking to all of you. So, thank you for having us here.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Paul, and thank you, planning board, for obviously having me here tonight and supporting the economic development position. I think it's been just about a month now and I have been able to meet a lot of stakeholders and the selectmen and some of the key community leaders, you know, in that, in that, you know, aggregate. But I think I'm finding just, you know, my observations to date are just really fascinating. There's a lot of passion and love for the community and there's a lot of thoughtful care that goes into the planning for its future and I'm really happy to be part of, you know, enabling that and facilitating that for the residents here. So, thanks for that opportunity.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Yes, welcome. We're excited.
Thank you for having us. Appreciate it.
Thank you, welcome.
Okay. Kristen, do announcements?
Continuances first.
Okay. All right.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take items 7C, 7D, 7E and 7F together and out of order for discussion purposes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seven zero. Item 7C is a continued public hearing, petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article 2, definitions and Article 4, use regulations to address and define uses pertaining to parking structures submitted by Eskerdale Realty LLC. Item 7D is a continued public hearing, petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article 5, dimensional regulation schedule as it pertains to parking structures submitted by Eskerdale Realty. Item 7E is a continued public hearing, petition to amend zoning bylaw, Article 7, parking structures, to modify the requirements for parking garages submitted by Eskerdale Realty. And item 7F is a continued public hearing, petition to rezone property to the general business district, 1 to 3 Ray Avenue. Ray Avenue Trust is the applicant.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue these matters to the planning board meeting of February 20th, 2020, as requested by the applicant's attorney in an email dated February 4th, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seven zero. Thank you. We have one more, I think. Nope, more than one more. We have a few more.
Madam Chair, make a motion to take items 7G and 7H together and out of order for discussion purposes. Check it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seven zero. Item 7G is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.3.2.6, outdoor storage of supplies and equipment incidental to permitted uses, subject to requirements for location, lighting, screening, fencing, cover and safety precautions of the zoning bylaw, 376 Cambridge Street. The Granite Place Incorporated is the applicant. And item 7H is a continued discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change, 376 Cambridge Street. The Granite Place is the applicant.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue these matters to the planning board meeting of February 20th, 2020, as requested by the applicant's engineer in an email dated February 6, 2020.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seven zero.
To take items 7I out of order for discussion purposes?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seven zero. Item 7I is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.3.2.22.2, solar energy system ground-mounted of the zoning bylaws, 50 Margaret Street, Northeast Solar Systems Doing, excuse me, Northeast Solar Services Doing Business as Revolution is the applicant.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of June 4, 2020, as requested by the applicant in an email dated February 4, 2020.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seven zero. Next, we have citizens' time. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a matter not on our agenda, please come forward. Seeing no one, we will move on to announcements.
All right, announcements. So, coming up in February, we have the deadline for zoning warrant articles is coming up Tuesday, February 11th until 4:30 and you can drop those off in the selectman's office in the town hall. The last day to register to vote in our presidential primary is Wednesday, February 12th. The town clerk's office is open until 8 o'clock and you can find all more information at the clerk's office. The last day to take out papers for the town election is also on the 12th until 5 o'clock and you have to return those papers by Friday, February 14th. The town clerk's office will be open until 5:00 PM on that day. I have, the zoning bylaw review committee is having a meeting on February 12th at 6:00 PM. They're not?
Already met on the 5th, sorry.
Okay. Town calendar has a lot of zoning bylaw review committees on the calendar. And then finally, the President's Day holiday is Monday, February 17th and town hall offices will be closed.
Thank you. We do not have any legal notices or non-approvals, so we'll move on to item six on our agenda, administrative matters. Item 6A is a continued discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change, 3 and 5 Dartmouth Road, General Walker Estates subdivision. General Walker Estates is the applicant. So, this is, the applicant is not here tonight. We're going to give an update as to where things stand on the site and with the, with the peer review, correct? So, I'll let you discuss peer review first.
Sure. So, we met with the, so, actually, let's start from the beginning. So, we got the minor engineering change. Some questions came up. We met with council. Council advised us to undertake the peer review process, which we actually, we were thinking about it and it was, anyway, in order to have an independent engineer come in and really take a look at some of the things that we had been concerned about. We have engaged the peer review. We're using BSC Group out of Andover, which is their, one of their newer offices, for the peer review. We just signed the paperwork Monday. We will be starting to coordinate meetings with them and the applicant for site visits, meetings with the town staff and meetings with this body. So, that process will begin. We did meet with the applicant on Monday. We had actually two meetings. One with engineering, building, town administrator and myself and town council. And we, actually, we had a meeting with us, then we had a meeting with the applicant and all of those department heads, as well as Barbara, the chairman, to discuss kind of moving forward, the peer review, what we need to do to, you know, get, remedy the issues and get to a point of completion. But I know, Barbara, if you want to add additional things within that.
Yes. We received assurances from the applicant that he is going to be much more directly involved in the site and we are hopeful that these matters will be resolved in a timely fashion from now on. A few things short-term that we discussed with the applicant that are to be addressed within the next two weeks are regarding the properties at 101 and 103 Francis Wyman, where they are to remove an excavator, a dump truck, another truck and a lot of debris. They will be placing barriers up to prevent dumping by others on the site after that and all of this needs to be completed by February 18th. We are expecting an update to the office on February 11th so that we can make sure that that's moving in the right direction. That is all going to be prior to lifting of the cease and desist order, which is also dependent upon the peer review. Currently, there is a cease and desist order in place, so there should not be any activity in the site, but we did want to let neighbors know that this activity, the removal of equipment and debris and putting up the fences, that's allowed because that's a step forward that we want to see done even while the cease and desist order is in place. So, I know the neighbors have a lot of concerns and the many items that we have on our list, it would be a bit lengthy for us to discuss them all tonight, but we'd be happy to review them with you in our office over, you know, the next couple of days. I think you're all familiar with them anyway. But we are hopeful that this deeper involvement by the applicant at this point moving forward will, we're hoping to turn a new page on this site and have a positive outcome very soon. I don't know if there are any members of the board that have questions and then after that, I want to see if there's anyone in the audience that wanted to speak.
Can I add just one, one thing? One of the points that we drove home really forcefully on Monday was the owner of the site, we haven't seen as much as I think we'd like to, and what we really wanted to drive the point home to him is the leadership that he needs to have over the site and the actions of any of the subcontractors that he has out there and make sure that really there's a control and leadership on the site moving forward as the development continues. And he did give us an indication that he would be much more involved moving forward, so.
Right. And importantly, that there is now one contact that we can call on whenever there are questions or concerns and he is solely responsible for that. So, I think that's a positive step as well.
Yes, thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Please come forward. Welcome and please state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Dave Miller, Gloria Circle, direct butter to this project and I have some remarks I'd like to make tonight. I think will serve as a good follow-up to the discussion that was had at the last planning board meeting and also for the two newer members of the planning board who weren't involved with this at the beginning of this project, they'll get a feeling for what's been going on for the past three years. So, as a preference, as a preface to my comments, I wanted to point out that there are a large number of abutting properties, 12 and Street 7, that are impacted by this project. So, I'm speaking not just for myself, but for the many impacted abutters. I am a town meeting member, they are my constituents and I receive comments from them all the time about this project. With that said, at the planning board meeting of 19 September 2019, when I spoke about this project at citizens' time, planning board member, Mr. Raymond, said, quote, "For them to do something to that extent, I think is just kind of an in-your-face to the planning board," end quote. Then Chairwoman, Ms. LaRue, added, quote, "More importantly, to the neighbors," end quote. At the planning board meeting of 3 October 2019, again, when I spoke about this project at citizens' time, planning board member, Mr. Raymond, said, quote, "It is not only right what they're doing, it is not only not right what they're doing as far as a neighborhood, but it's a very bad example of what you can do in the town of Burlington if you want to," end quote. So, since the developers' transgressions have reached the level of being in your face and an example of what you can get away with in Burlington, I and the other abutters must... and an example of what you can get away with in Burlington, I and the other abutters must insist that the developer restore the properties in question to the conditions as per the approved plans, the conditions before they did their unlawful work after the properties were signed off. Band-aid solutions aren't acceptable to us anymore. The abutters have suffered terribly for almost three years with this project. It's time for the developer to suffer some consequences for his blatant and outrageous actions. We are tired of hearing all the misleading statements the waypoints Mr. Champy has espoused about what's gone on with this project. A few examples, at the Conservation Commission meeting of 14 November, 2019, he told the commission that the myriad of construction hour violations were due to them starting their trucks up 10 minutes before 7:00 AM to warm them up. The construction hour violations were, in fact, due to actual work being done, beginning at 6:15 to 6:30 AM, after hours until 8:30 to 9:00 PM, and even all day on a Sunday, hammering on the roof. That one was the one that put me over the edge and triggered me to completely rewrite the town's construction hour bylaw. All of these incidents are a matter of public record. Just check the police logs, as well as the file that the planning department has on this project. At that same Conservation Commission meeting, Mr. Champy tried to disassociate waypoint from most of the project transgressions, claiming they took over the project after the fact. Well, if you remember, there were five instances where fires were started in the cellar holes to burn up construction materials, including pressure-treated lumber. The fire department had to come out each time to douse the fires. On one particular instance, just as the firemen left, we saw and heard AFF Georges, Waypoint's onsite project manager, say to the workmen, quote, "Can we just burn the material in a barrel?" End quote. Again, these are a matter of public record, just check the fire logs. One other time, we again saw and heard AFF, the Waypoint onsite project manager, while standing at the rear of 5 Dartmouth Foundation, asked the workmen, quote, "Can we just hide that?" End quote. "We don't know what they were trying to hide, but it certainly doesn't sound good to us." At the planning board meeting of 16 January, 2020, the last planning board meeting, Mr. Champy said the 3 and 5 Dartmouth grade raising did not occur after the COs were issued. Well, my wife and I, as well as neighbors from two other abutting properties, witnessed the grade raising, so we know when that occurred. We have contemporaneous emails, as well as contemporaneous meeting with Kristin Kastner, the planning director, and Andy Ungerson, the building inspector, on 17 April, 2019 about this issue. Again, all a matter of public record. At that same planning board meeting, Mr. Champy told the planning board that Waypoint sends out weekly update, email updates to the abutters. The last email we got was on 16 December, 2019. The one before that was on 10 September, 2018, and the one before that was on 14 May, 2018. Does that sound like weekly updates to you? And the 16 December, 2019, 18 was to tell the abutters they were going to do exploratory excavation work, work that they weren't allowed to do. Even after Waypoint was told no work could be done on the project until all outstanding issues could be resolved, they defied the planning and building departments by doing work on 2 Dartmouth Road, which is part of General Walker Estates, without pulling a permit. Up until yesterday at 12:30 PM, they continued to defy the planning and building departments by keeping heavy construction equipment at the 101 Francis Wyman Road property, which is also part of General Walker Estates, several months after being told to remove all such equipment. During the thick of the construction activity, a cease and desist order was issued on the project for the many violations. So, now there have been two such orders issued. As Chairwoman Ms. LaRue said at the last planning board meeting, you don't get cease and desist orders for doing good work. During the public, during the public hearings on this project, the abutters told the planning board that we thought this project was going to be a fiasco. Unfortunately, our prediction came true. I don't know what more I can say about this that I haven't already said in my many citizens' time appearances before this board. Other than we abutters have suffered terribly over these past three years, we have been treated shamefully, and we don't want to take it anymore. We're fed up, and we have every right to be. As far as I'm concerned, the minor engineering change should be dead on arrival. Thank you for letting me end.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Could we get a copy of that?
Sure.
Because I think that it's, there's a lot of valuable information. I appreciate you coming, and I appreciate you taking such careful notes and also coordinating on behalf of all your neighbors. As I said before, I'm cautiously optimistic that we may have turned a new page on the site, but it is very important that we keep a very close eye on it, as I know you have been doing, and I think it would be helpful for us to have a copy of your comments today.
I'm not as optimistic as based on all the misleading statements that have gone on.
I share your concern.
So...
An electronic copy is good, too. Yes, that would be fine. Is there anyone on?
I can email this, too.
Yeah.
I gave a hard copy, and I'll email.
Emails, that's great.
Yeah, emails, great, too. You know where your email address is.
Bill, did you?
Yeah, just a question, I guess, to staff. I think I heard that the peer review was with BSC in Andover, is that right?
Yes.
Isn't BSC one of the groups that comes before that?
So, BSC has kind of compartmentalized some of their operations, so they're kind of have hard walls between some of their units. So, this office, we don't have any conflict with.
Let me ask, let me ask it a different way, then. Were they awarded because of the lowest bidder? Is that how that works with the town government?
Um...
I think you'd want to, even the perception of conflict of interest, you'd probably want to stay away from, or how does that work? I just, you know, it came to me, it just kind of raised a flag, but I mean...
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to...
You know, how does that, if it's me, maybe it's not anybody else, but...
I think it's a valid concern.
Yeah.
Good question.
Were they chosen or versus somebody else that may have not had any association with them?
If we, uh... They were the only capable respondent for the project in our mind, so. And we made sure to vet any conflict before awarding the peer review.
So, was that vetted with town council, or was it with the, you know, who's that?
We can follow up with town council. We did go through a process to make sure that anyone working on this project was no one that we've worked with before or would be working with on projects moving forward.
Yeah, I just, I guess, where I'd be concerned with, and I understand that, but, and I'm not, maybe it's convinced you are with regard to higher lines between folks in the same, so I don't know where the folks that represent most of the applicants here, what office they're in.
I can check. I mean, for the most part, Burlington has so much activity, it's really, I mean, unless you go out of state, it's pretty hard to find anyone who does, has not worked at any point in time or would work in the future in Burlington. So, it's hard to find, draw a bright line between though, an engineering, a civil engineering group that does this type of work, and people who haven't worked or will ever work in Burlington, so it's...
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that'd be the case, but maybe one that is constantly from the board. You would think that there might be one that maybe comes in every couple of years that may have some expertise or experience, but if they're the only one in town or in the state, that...
I'd be happy to follow up with the board next week with some more feedback on that front.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Bill. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to make sure, I know everyone saw the email from Tody Monarazo from, to Dartmouth, and note that came in after the meeting on Monday.
Yes.
Just want to make sure this concern is about the cul-de-sac of being added to the pile of fun.
They are on the list.
They are on the long list.
Thank you very much. That's all I had, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I stand by everything I said before. If I had my druthers, and if we could, I would shut this project down completely right now. I would require the proponent to pay for us to hire a full-time person to be on that site going forward, and that they not be allowed to do any work unless that person was on-site to represent us and the neighbors, because these people... It appears to me, and we've had this happen before, some developers and people are that way. They just go and do whatever they want to do, and then they come back to us, you know, and ask us to bust it. And these people are, you know, worse than a seven-year itch. I mean, they just go out, and there's so much that needs to be done on that site, particularly as far as the grading and so forth is concerned. So, I think we have a responsibility to these neighbors to address these, this developer in such a way that he will respond to what needs to be done there, without giving us a song and dance and everything else every time he comes, and just then goes and supposed to move the equipment, and six months later, it's still there.
Right. So, to, I agree...
Completely dismissing us, to me.
I agree. But all work has stopped, just so you know. The cease and desist has been ordered, so they're not working there. I like your idea of having someone on-site monitoring. I don't know how we would go about doing that, but it's something I think it's worth looking into. I think that's a very innovative approach.
Well, we have a staff, and, you know, that's the kind of thing they should be doing for us.
But they can't be there all the time. I like the idea of...
No, I'm not talking about they're being there, but they're suggesting, you know, somebody...
Yes.
Because we used to, and Mike brought it up at the last meeting, there used to be somebody who formally or informally worked for the planning board. I don't know what the arrangements were, but they were apparently satisfactory at that time. But we should have our own person who goes out, does site visits overseas, reports back to the staff and us, so that we don't get these people just, you know, cowboy-ing around and doing whatever they want to do. And it's not fair. I mean, they pay taxes, they have a right to peace and quiet, and there's nothing that's more aggravating. I had that happen one time. Next-door neighbor, it's Sunday morning at 6:00 o'clock, there's a guy out there roofing. You know, and, you know, I reported it to the police and so forth, and they have responded in other instances, but in this case, I don't know, they gave me some Robidope, and the hammering kept going on. So, that's, that's just the way I look at it, and if that could be done, I would certainly, you know, be in favor of it.
Thank you, Paul.
We'll look in, I mean, we can look into the mechanism.
Okay. Good. We don't want to step on the toes of the building department, but they also can't be there all the time, and so...
None of us can be there all the time.
Right.
But, but the question is, is there a mechanism to have additional oversight in some, you know, peer review, or some sort of process that is possible? We'll look into it.
Maybe inspection process, like, daily, weekly, I don't know.
We'll look into it. It's a great idea.
Just to Paul's point, way back when, you're right, Paul, we did have somebody, I think he was referred to as a subdivision inspector, anyway.
General development inspector.
General development inspector, as Kristin corrected me, and at that time, there was, if I remember correctly, there was a lot more residential building going on, too. I don't know, did he inspect industrial, commercial?
He worked in the, it was a position that was under the engineering department.
Right.
But, and so we didn't formally have a person in our budget, but the design of it was, they worked in the engineering department, but any ongoing project we had, if we said, oh, hey, we just got a call, can you go shoot over there to take a look at this, that, or the other thing? And, you know, he would give us project update, or just onsite updates of what was happening, so.
And he was knowledgeable enough, he had worked actually in the construction field. I knew him through, through another, other ways that he would be able to tell if they were putting a pipe in correctly or that kind of thing, so. In that position, I just kind of, once he left the position, Ernie Spack was his name, I guess it faded away, or...
Well, no, and then Mark Gerberans took his position.
Ah, right, right.
And then, when Tom Hickey moved over to town assistant town administrator, the whole department was reconfigured, so.
Yeah. This takes more than somebody there every once in a while saying, "You mustn't do that, or you should be doing, you shouldn't be doing that." These people require, I think, a more forceful presentation, and I believe we somehow... Where they must respond, or they're not going to get this project done.
Agreed.
One other thing, I was just thinking, I noticed that when the mall was doing the construction project, the general contractor had actually put a sign up right at all the entries to the site that said, that listed the work hours and said absolutely no work other than these hours. And I'm wondering if maybe we could do something in our subdivision approvals, or maybe in the general bylaw to require somebody to actually have that sign up there.
I think certainly could.
Because of a subcontract that comes on the job.
Yeah.
And that's one of the big pain in the necks. I've lived beside construction projects before.
Yeah, I mean, in this particular, I think that's a great idea, and I think we should just do it. There's no reason to even discuss it further. We should just do that when we... Help, but it doesn't address all of the concerns, obviously. But I do like Paul's idea of having someone who is present more often, who's inspecting and watching, and I think that would be very helpful.
It would, but, you know, the biggest issue for us is, are they going to be required to put that property back to the way it was as per the approved plan?
Mm-hmm.
That's the big thing for us.
Right. Well, that's what the peer review is looking at, to see what has, what they've done, what they did, does what they did, sorry, does the current state at the site now match what they were approved to do? And if it's found that it's not the same, then they either have to put it, do the work to make it match, or they would have to somehow convince us that they have another remedy that's as good or better than the original plan. It's going to be difficult to convince us of that.
Actually, you know, that brings up something maybe somebody in the staff or the planning board knows. When I looked at the planning board website and look at the official documents that are on there for this, quote, "minor engineering change," in the long report, they talk about for 5 Dartmouth, Cape Cod berm running into a, a, Cape Cod, into a swale. And that's what they talked about last, at the last planning board meeting. However, the cover letter and the site plan call, say it's a Cape Cod berm going into a forbay. If you look on the site plan, it's marked in red, Cape Cod berm going to a forbay. Now, I looked up what the meaning of a forbay is, and when you look up a dictionary definition of a forbay, it's an open pool of water. Those are not allowed in Burlington. So, again, is this an issue of them trying to sneak one past us or something?
Probably.
There's inconsistency in the cover letter, the site plan, and in the long document there. So, I don't know if anybody, any of you have caught that, but I caught that, and it's like, forbay, no.
Okay, thank you. We'll have to look into that as well. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wanted to speak about this? Yes, please come forward. Welcome, please state your name and address for the record.
Certainly. My name is Reginald Griffin, and I live at 25 Gloria Circle, and warn a butler to the General Walker Estates project. And I just want to make this very brief, and that is, I second everything that David Miller has just said. Period. I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Is there someone else in the audience that would like to speak? No? Okay. All right, I think we're going to continue this matter. I am told that at the next planning board meeting on February 20th, Mr. Champo will be present, and I think that will be a valuable opportunity for us to address many of these issues directly with him.
I make a motion to continue this matter, the planning board meeting on February 20th, 2020.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seven zero. Thank you. Our next matter is Item 7, matters of appointment. Item 7, may I have a motion to have Items 7A and 7B together for discussion purposes, please?
So, move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's a seven zero. Item 7A is an application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.6.10, restaurants of the zoning bylaws. 75... restaurants of the zoning bylaws, 75 Middlesex Turnpike Burlington Mall. Restaurant?
Fogo de Chao.
Fogo de Chao, and I'm going to leave off the last word. Burlington LLC is the applicant. And item seven B is a public hearing, application for approval of the site plan, 75 Middlesex Turnpike Burlington Mall, Fogo de Chao is the applicant. Welcome.
Madam Chair, with the record, it's Mark Vaughn here tonight representing the applicant, Fogo de Chao. In connection with the applications before you, with me is Jennifer Moulton, who is Director of Architecture and Development for Fogo de Chao, flown in here from beautiful Plano, Texas for the meeting. And also Justin Feldhouse, the manager of the Burlington Mall, who might, who you all know. And you have Jocelyn Gannon with PhD as well, if any questions about it. But very pleased to be before you tonight in connection with this application. But this involves a full-service dining establishment offering Brazilian-style fare that is looking to locate at the Burlington Mall. Fogo de Chao, for those of you not familiar with them, they are an authentic Southern Brazilian steakhouse combining the best of the centuries-old culinary tradition of churrasco with a focus on exceptional customer service. They have locations in select markets throughout the country. They have one location in Massachusetts, that being in Copley Square. They have a location at the Western Hotel on Dartmouth Street. That's their only Massachusetts location, and they're very excited about the opportunity to expand their Massachusetts footprint here into Burlington. So we have filed both a special permit and site plan application, special permit, obviously, for the restaurant use itself. And with respect to the restaurant, it is going to be located in the corner of the former Sears building that is located, I always lose my bearings here, I guess it would be the northeasterly corner of the building with, you know, the district and tavern in the square over. Portion of the former Sears space where the, the outdoor storage area and all that was, was located at Sears. So it's a 363-seat restaurant. Eighty-six of those seats would actually be outdoor patio dining seats that would surround the building facade. And I have passed out some renderings that I thought might be helpful to help show not only the quality of the build-out and the materials that are envisioned here, but also to give you a better flavor, no pun intended, I guess, for the, the open-air dining area and how that is, is made. They have a roof and a neat wall along the perimeter for those outdoor dining areas, but otherwise it's open air. They do have the ability to have sliding window screens, as I understand it. So they wanted to have window screens slid to be able to address any inclement weather or wind coming in a certain direction. They're able to do that. The intent is to, this was not full-season dining, it's, there's no HVAC that's out there, so it would be seasonal dining. But with the, the roof feature and the sliding wind screens, it just allows them to address the elements a little bit better than what they might otherwise be able to do.
Screens or windows, Mark?
Screens or windows.
We call them wind screens. They're just a, a.
Is it glass or screen?
Oh, they're glass.
Okay, that, I call that a window. So that's why I was asking. Thank you.
And this is at the corner of the, the building where also, just to remind the board that this is also the area that surround, the, the pocket park that was previously approved by the planning board, is part of the overall site plan for the Sears redevelopment. That's on the outer perimeter of this, not the subject of this application, obviously, but I'm sure the board, you know, recalls what we were talking about there. But again, that area that surrounds this, that's what incorporate a combination of hardscape and landscaping that would be programmed for different uses that Simon and Justin are still in the process of kind of determining exactly how that would be detailed. But the intent is that that would be a lot of family programming space, talking about oversized games, you know, maybe even an outdoor skating rink and things of that nature. Farmer's Market was something that they were talking about maybe partnering with the town on as well, if there's an opportunity. So they're still in the process of determining the exact utilization of it. But the plan that was approved by the board does show, you know, how that area kind of looks, and we're working on the program and everything. So with that, I know Jennifer wanted to just say a few things, just about the restaurant itself.
Well, we're excited to come into Burlington. We do have a, a store in Boston on Copley Plaza, and it's one of our older restaurants. Fogo de Chão was brought into the United States about 30 years ago by four brothers from Brazil. So this is the only authentic churrascaria in the United States. We have a lot of copycats, but we are the only authentic. So 30 years ago, they were encouraged by President George Bush to bring the concept to Dallas, Texas. That was the first location. We now have three in Dallas. But overall, we have 42 restaurants in the United States now with 10 originals in Southern Brazil. It is a years-old tradition, generations of tradition of Gaúcho chefs, which really are cowboys. It's the Southern Brazilian cowboy who is, you know, cattlemen. They celebrate by barbecuing their cattle. And Fogo de Chão means fire on the ground. So the tradition is to roast the meat on spits over an open fire. And also, the, the idea of abundance is, and hospitality is very important to us. The market table, which most people would call it a salad bar, but fresh fruit, fresh food, fresh salads, very unique presentation and offering. So it's a place of celebration, abundance, hospitality. So I think that we will do very well in Burlington as we have in other markets.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Just a, a few small things. This is the first, the first tenant space that you're seeing on this side. So we're starting to get a peek of the design of the green space around it and how the tenant spaces are really interacting with outside. It's not, I mean, I think this whole thing is supposed to be outward-facing, but not just a door, but with this, it really interacts with the outdoor spaces. So I think that's integral to kind of the next phase of what this mall is going to be. Overall, we don't have any concerns about the restaurant itself. Just with the outdoor patio space, as we've suggested in, let's see, Tavern on the Square and, I'm going to say paparazzi, but that's, when we permitted it, it was paparazzi. But with the hardtop patio, and I think Redstone, we did it too. But anyway, we're okay with that, you know, the patio and the, the hardtop. But we've had, we have conditions which will echo in this as well, that if at any time that is absorbed into the restaurant more formally for many more seasons, we just want to, that especially if it's fully absorbed with HVAC and everything, that you have to come back here to amend the special permit and site plan to increase the official size of the restaurant and the mall.
That actually happened at Redstone. It has been absorbed, just so you know. I was seated out there in December.
Okay, that's good to know. But.
No, it wasn't cold at all.
No, it wasn't. Anyway, so we will have language to make sure that we understand the seasonality of the patio spaces, because I know that has been a concern in the past. But overall, the way it's designed, there is a hard wall like there is at Paparazzi, and this is, or what is it now?
Yes.
Jax. Where there is a hard wall, there is no HVAC, and so therefore there is no mechanism to heat inside, so.
Do they have closing glass walls?
Where, the, these guys or?
No.
Just Michael, no. So it's outside, there's not, nothing there. It's just they have a gate, but there's no, there's no fence.
So, so anyway, that other, we just wanted to echo that that was a condition that we're, you know, we'll watch to make sure that if Redstone seated you in December, that.
Thank you.
But otherwise, we don't have any concern, and it's nice to see it so activated to the exterior around it.
Do you have comments in departments?
So it appears that the comments have not been new since the last, was these around the beginning of January?
They haven't come before us before.
Yes. Oh, this is the first, yeah.
And no, and no special spaces we've put in.
Right, 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 okay.
No special spaces, I think.
No takeout? It doesn't sound like a takeout place, anyway.
So they can't, so, so it's been out there for a while, just hasn't come before us, because these are from the beginning of January. So they're, building inspector, no, no objections, no comments. DPW Engineering, you've got your standard water and sewer. Mark, you have those, because they're all standard. Okay. Fire, fire department, no objection. Approval was submitted. Board of Health. Comments on the Board of Health? Comments, are there any comments on the Board of Health? Do not change the comments around if any comments. Good thing they tell us that. One, the proposed food establishment must undergo a plan review. A plan review application shall be submitted to and approved by the Board of Health prior to construction. A new external grease interceptor and internal grease interceptor shall be installed for the purpose of food establishment. These grease interceptors shall be appropriately sized and installed in accordance with the Burlington Board of Health grease interceptor requirements of food establishments in State Plumbing Code Number Three regarding the outdoor seating compliance with the Mass Smoke-Free Workplace Law, which prohibits migration of smoke into the workplace, example, through a door or a window, shall be met. Any smoke that migrates back into the workplace is considered a violation of the law. Board of Health enforces this law. That's the Board of Health comments.
Can we specify no smoking in that area?
I'm sorry, what was?
Specify no smoking on the patio, right?
Yeah, there's no smoking.
It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be.
You don't allow that anyway, right? Okay, thank you.
So it's a good, a good question as to how, you know, if they have a park that's right up next to this, and that's one of, going to be my, one of my questions, is if there's smoking areas in the park and that infiltrates the restaurant, how does that affect it? Because it's, you know, be an open space.
The local, I thought the local regulation was no smoking within, I think it's 25 or 50 feet of a public building.
There is an amount. I'm, I can't confirm if it's 25.
I don't recall precisely what it is, but we would certainly ask somebody to move and go elsewhere.
So the question is maybe, in this case, where there will be people assembled out there, and there will be people being here, I wonder if, you know, maybe we post some, you know, smoking signs in that area or something that would deter them from doing that. Because it's, you know, I could see a, you know, a scenario by which people are eating and someone's smoking and they're not told, you know, for whatever reason, they're just, it's bothering the people, but they're not told to leave. But if there's no smoking signs, maybe, you know, consider that anyway. So we have Board of Health issue. But conservation, there are no conservation concerns with the special permit application. So that's it for comments.
Well, since you have the mic, would you like to continue, Joe?
Sure. Just a couple of quick questions. And it's, it's more in regard, regarding, because we had reviewed this earlier today, and we couldn't figure out what these configurations here were. But it appears that these configurations are planters with, it looks like shrubs or some sort of, little plantings in there? The, yeah, those, yeah.
So, yeah, the intent is that that would be, you know, planting beds and green space. Everything that's shown in green would show, you know, within this curved area that's, that's not green would be, you know, hardscape. And again, the, the programmatic elements of it really haven't been finalized in terms of how it's going to be utilized. But the intent, I think, would be to see something similar to what you've seen on other locations, whether it's Market Street in Linfield where they have outdoor games, you know, they have a, a seasonal skating rink there as well at times. I think they're still working to back to see how best to.
Right. Okay.
The theme is to make it a, a family-friendly environment where people can enjoy themselves and spend some time.
So Mark is. The outdoor area, Third Ave?
I'm sorry?
The outdoor area, Third Ave.
Well, so the, so the, brings the question from my mind as to what, what is it, is it, is it going to be grass?
Are we talking about this, the, the large grass green area on this map right here?
Yeah, so this.
Artificial turf.
Oh.
Artificial turf.
So it's artificial turf, okay.
So the same level of turf that they use on professional sports fields. This is a very high-end product.
Is that the same type of stuff we have on Burlington High School football field?
I, I don't know. I don't know what.
Because I've been told that's the kind of stuff that they have in professional football fields, and it has those horrible little balls that stick to your feet.
Well, the problem, that's right. The problem with that, I guess, would be that there are, there are a fair, a fair amount of people are allergic to those, to that, the petroleum or whatever.
Not grass.
Because it just would not stand up. It's not durable enough. With the, a number of people that we're going to see, that we expect to be using these areas, the grass would, would just die. It would be difficult to grow it again.
They have some at Linfield, right?
They do. The green area at Linfield is, is the same product.
And it doesn't have those little balls that stick to your.
Yeah, there's a, there's a maintenance program that goes along with this when you do it correctly. There's grooming and there's cleaning and sanitizing that happens.
Well, there is, because it does carry a lot of bacteria in those as well, right.
Because they have grass at Third Ave, I think, in that space between the two restaurants where kids play and stuff, and they have a little sprinkler thing that comes up.
Cornhole tournaments there and stuff.
Yeah, isn't that grass?
I will have to check it out.
That is grass.
I thought it was grass. There's a lot of activity there, especially in the, in the nice months, children play there. They have these little sprinkler things that pop up.
I think that the sprinkler things, aren't those on pavement? Those are on pavement. Those are on grass.
Yes.
If it's the same stuff at the Linfield, at the Linfield Marketplace, that's actually, it's, it's not bad. I've done some exercise classes at like the, on the greens there, and, you know, you're up and down, you're on, you're on your knees.
It's not like the high school football field.
Yeah, it was not, it was not.
It's not like the artificial turf you're thinking of from the old days where you fall down and you get a, you know, a burn on your knees.
Well, no, but, no, but, no, but.
Neither is the football field. It's, it's first-class football field, I'm told.
But, but there are products out there now that are actually green, that are not, they don't use tires. They don't use.
Oh, okay.
I, and I, and I would think that that would be more than one use. It's a, it, there's no smell to it, there's no, and my guess is it's probably non-allergenic, allergic to the people who are allergic to those petrol, whatever it is, they're allergic to the petroleum.
It's specifically designed for this type of use.
Yeah, I mean, they, they, I mean, they also, there are articles that, you know, that the ground-up tires are actually carcinogen.
They are.
Could you, I know it has nothing to do with this restaurant, but at some point in the future, could you maybe bring a sample of that into the office so that we can look at what it really looks like? Because I'm curious to see it. I don't know about the board members.
I'll ask you something, Madam Chair. If, if it's not part of this, what's, what's it part of with regard to an approval?
Well, I don't know. So that's why we're going.
So I'm, I'm just, I'd like to hold off on this unless we say it's something else that's associated with approval of that, because I'd really like to take a look at Linfield and check it out prior to approval. If it's associated with, if it's not, there's some other mall landscaping plan that we have approved or haven't approved, and that's separate.
Could you maybe take a few minutes just to describe that whole outdoor area better, what the material. Questions about it, and you might be able to head off those questions if you just describe what your vision is for that.
So the landscape plan really was prepared by.
Microphone.
And we can go through, and unfortunately, you know, we don't have a lot of the specific materials, but Jocelyn will be able to better describe the areas than.
For Jocelyn Gampon, I'm a civil engineer, not a landscape architect, so please forgive me if I misspeak. But here, these will be, the areas that are highlighted here will be specialty patio pavers within all the patio areas. Outside will be a mixture like what's shown as concrete on our plan. There'll be different patterns of paved concrete, I mean, patterned. There'll be different patterns of paved concrete, I mean, patterned concrete, different colors, textures throughout that area. These lighter green planter beds will be planted with the very shrubs, perennials. And then this larger area that we just talked about here would be artificial turf. Same with this piece over here. There'll be benches scattered throughout the area, there'll be some light fixtures. I do have an out-of-date rendering, I think it might be worth just showing.
Are there any trees?
I believe, I believe so.
Okay, this is helpful.
Sorry. So again, this is a little out of date, this is from 2018, we were before you. This structure here is no longer being proposed, so just ignore that, but it will be infilled with planting. So this kind of gives you a better sense, there'll be some tall trees here, again, the planting beds. Be by the individual tenants. So yeah, definitely a good mix of trees and shrubs throughout the area.
Can we, that's, the picture's lovely, the other question about the, the board underneath it?
Yes.
The shaded area that's, like, not quite as bright green next to the building that you pointed out for, yes, is that where the outdoor seating is?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask staff about, a question for staff, is that outdoor area part of this approval?
It was part of the original approval for the whole Sears redevelopment, so.
So it's already approved?
It's, the patio area has already, is, is already part of this, the overall site plan for the Sears redevelopment. So it's not, this isn't a new patio area, they're just outfitting it for their tenant space is essentially what it is.
So.
Is that, is that accurate, Mark?
Yeah. The application is before you, doesn't, it's, it's proximate to the, the Pocket Park, which is why we, you know, wanted to have it here to be able to show you. But the, the, the space that's the subject of the special permit of the site plan is limited to, you know, the interior of the building here where the restaurant would be, then, you know, the.
Let, let me fill it in a little bit. So in the original site plan, there were areas shown in kind of dotted lines of, you had tenant spaces, you had dotted lines, it's maybe a patio will be here. And so, and therefore, we wanted to concern ourselves at the time with where the sidewalk was around it and so forth. So when each restaurant came in, that dotted line, you know, we said, okay, you don't need to do a minor engineering change each time if it's in that dotted line. For this section, for the phase two of the Sears piece, there's a big dotted line around this. There's patios on some part of it and a big dotted line in this area. As to, you know, that they're in development, we said, okay, we understand you're in development. But I will say that was discussed as each patio, we look at each patio and what's in that dotted line. You know, whether or not this, this whole area is part of this particular special permit, I think what, what we do need to understand is we were told that we would get more information about what's in that dotted line as we continue to move forward. So I think what we need to understand is where are you guys with that final plan? And what's in that, those dotted lines, including not just, I think we understand with Fogo de Chao that around the, it's very clear right around the patio areas, and I think you guys are clear on what's going in there. But to the extent of the other dotted line of kind of the recreational public space, which is fantastic and I think we're all happy that it's there. But I think what you're hearing from the board and from, based on the original permit is as you develop it, we're game to understanding what's happening there, but also want a window into understanding it as we do with the patio, what's happening there. So if, you know, is this corner, is, what else are we gonna be seeing along, you know, along the face of Sears? And, you know, are, are there gonna be other restaurants? And what point are you in final design of the exterior spaces? Because I don't think we want to weigh in tremendously if it's just still in design, but we want to weigh in, I think what you're hearing is they want to weigh in at some point in the evolution of the design. And we're okay with not having a final plan originally, but want to understand how it's evolving, moving forward.
And perhaps it would make sense, rather than trying to address that outdoor space with this restaurant, which is not really in charge of that outdoor space, maybe we have you back at another time just to discuss that outdoor space.
Well, and especially if they're kind of still in process, so.
Yeah.
If I can just add too, to your point, there are, we are planning to have multiple restaurants and materially, the plan for the park area has not changed much. I think the only thing that's changed really from the plan that we've, that we have approved is that, that corner sort of kiosk unit, that's now a landscape bed. Otherwise, everything else is the same. And our intention is to try to keep it the same, but we want to make sure that when we have tenants come in that it, this park area works in conjunction with the tenant space. And so that's why we're hesitant to put something out there, because it may change again and we don't want to continue to be in front of you for that.
Well, but we also know you're gonna be continually in front of us, so at some point, it's gonna be done. So I think what we're asking is, and I, I'm sorry, I mean, but I think what we're asking is, you know, keep us in the loop with that plan and you don't want to have a final plan and then the planning room will be like, wait a minute. So if we can, if, you know, not, as, not as part of the permitting process for this, but knowing as, that information is important as we continue the permitting process and getting a sense of the materials and especially things that you've really decided on, so we can just have an understanding of what that is moving forward, I think we'd be hopeful.
Personally, I think we should have a separate meeting about that outdoor space. And I'm not gonna say exactly when that should be, because I don't know where you are in the process, but I would suggest that you do it before it's finalized, but when it's close to finalized. So we have, we can give you some input, perhaps, but not when it's in its very early stages where you don't really have a lot to tell us. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay, all right. So, Joe, I'm sorry, we all interrupted you. You had questions? No, were you done?
No, they, they, we discussed it.
Okay.
I'll tell you, as you know, Justin is a busy guy. No, really, I mean, there is major stuff going on, if you haven't been to the mall, all through the mall. The corridor by Lord and Taylor is just full of construction equipment. They're working on the ceiling, they're working on the entrance coming in. They had to change the entrance because there's gonna be a major change coming into the food court area. And it's just, you know, I, I walk there almost every morning, we bob our heads at each other, but he's there either checking things out or talking with construction people and so forth. And I've seen he's, he's making his money now. And, and I'm really encouraged by it, because Jack Kelly, when the questions came in, is taking the Sears building out and so forth, he said, with what's happening in retail, you know, is that mall still gonna be there or is that going to end up as a housing development or whatever? So Simon's, obviously, their marketing and everything said, this is the way to go. And they're putting a lot of money into Burlington right now. So, and thank you for letting us walk there.
I get there early every morning to make sure it's ready for you.
That's also, I'm, I'm the representative and the recreation commission. And I think you guys make a greater contribution to the good health of the, of the residents of Burlington and from other places. I mean, it's not unusual.
Put your order in for coffee and doughnuts.
No, no, I'm a donkey guy.
Do you have any questions?
No, I don't, I'm listening to all that you're saying.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I say we're very excited to have you in Burlington. I know there's a lot of buzz and excitement when we saw it in the local papers, so welcome and we're happy to have you. Couple of questions about this type of restaurant. It's great that we're gonna have one, not so great for the waistline, because you said exuberance is one of your themes. And every time I go to one of these Brazilian steak houses, it's a lot of food. One of the things I wanted to ask about is the, Mark, I didn't see anything on here about the ventilation for the place. I know that they have a lot of grill areas and stuff. Is the ventilation, and like, do we have special ventilation for this type of area, especially in the mall where it's built beneath Primark? Is that addressed anywhere?
I can't speak to it unless Jennifer could, but.
Simon's requiring us to use an odor control unit.
Okay.
It's part of our build-out. And that's been specified. Actually, it was suggested we use the spec they told us to.
Okay, okay, so.
It's just as important to us that we don't impact our neighbors.
And are there any, like, open flame areas where you keep, I know they walk around, is this one of those places? They walk around with the, you turn over the thing if you want it or not. Are there, are there open flames or anything where some of the meat's stored between rounds or anything, like open grills?
It is a charcoal grill, yes, but it's contained, I mean, away from the guests.
Yeah.
The guests can see it, but it's contained.
Okay, it's separate from the dining area?
I wouldn't say separate, but it's behind a large counter. So the guests aren't allowed back behind where the meat is being prepared.
Okay, no further questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I had a couple of questions. With the, with the doors into the patio area, are they kept open or closed?
You mean the folding glass?
Between the patio and the restaurant?
Looks like there's three sections of patio, yeah, and you have separate doors that go into each one. So where, where my thought is on this is, you know, if you keep the door open and you've got the, you're calling them screens, I think we call them windows, if you have those closed, then the environment of the restaurant can just, you know, enter those and keep that, so you don't really need your environmental controls there, because it's just gonna be ambient of the restaurant for your external seating during the winter.
So the doors stay closed, I believe that the health department will require us to have the doors closed because of our open salad bar, that's usually the.
The doors between the patio seating and the restaurant, you mean?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because it would lead outside.
Yep, but not when, not, not when the windows are closed?
Even when the windows are closed?
You know what I'm saying?
The windows don't have full seal, I mean, you know, they're, they're just screens that. Weather tight, I don't think we would ever keep the door open.
Okay. Just a question for staff. Section 18 in the back, forgot the outdoor display of merchandise, the appetizers, Joe. Is that where it comes into play with umbrellas with logos on it and things like that?
Yes, I can also add a specific condition to that as well, if you would like, Bill.
And then just, section 23 kind of puzzled me a little bit with regard to, if applicable, in the event of the applicant or property owner offers valet parking. Do you have valet parking at your other, other restaurants?
We're allowed, yes.
Okay.
That, that is one of our guests offerings usually, I mean, especially in a downtown area. I, I don't really anticipate Burlington to utilize a lot of valet parking.
Right, but we, sorry.
We, we actually don't have valet.
Okay, well, then we won't.
So, yeah, why don't we strike that? And if there's gonna be requests at some point for, for valet parking, I think they should probably come back because of that, the whole issue.
Well, what this says is if applicable and they offer valet, they need to submit a plan for review as a minor engineering change.
They need to come back to us, anyway.
So we're, we're expressly saying, if you do it, you need to go back.
So what I would do is, I would, I would kind of strike the, the next sentence and probably run that, because then you can talk, you're talking about these valets, but if I, when I read it really quickly, I said, if applicable.
So just the first, come back if you want them.
If you want valet, come back, that's what I would say.
All right, that's fine.
Now the rest of the stuff is, when they come back, we can talk about.
Yep.
Timing and where it's gonna be and things like that, that's okay.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a few quick things. It looks like from the elevations that you're invited. Is, is Primate above this location, Primark?
It's not.
It is not? Okay, this is a, okay, so that answers that first question. And second question is to staff, I believe. The sidewalk on the Mall Road, I thought was tied to occupancy of the Sears building.
It is.
It is.
However, so the original permit was that the sidewalk needed to be complete by the first occupancy. When we got, when we got to the point of, through conservation, of approving the sidewalk, we were in late October, early November. The engineering. If they started work then, they would crisscross with the Christmas season. It would, it just, so what we did is there's, there's an agreement between the town and Simon to kind of pull that out a little further. So in, it's, instead of the first tenant, it's date-specific, so no other COs after. So if they start, it's a three months, if they start Octo, April 1st, it's three months. I think it's sometime, something in July.
So it's to be finished by a date-specific?
Date-specific in the spring, because of the impact in the fall would have, it just, between, you couldn't, after paving and so forth. So we kind of moved the ball out a little bit for the spring and there's a signed agreement between the town and Simon to that effect.
I just want to make sure it doesn't turn into a helicopter. Doesn't get lost in the.
No, oh, oh, no, no. It's, it, we haven't executed agreement as to when, what is gonna happen and when.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I have some more questions about these folding windows. Before we get to, so how many seats did you, I know you said this before, but I didn't write it down. How many seats are inside, not counting the patio seating?
Three hundred and sixty-three.
Oh, total, okay.
Six.
Are outdoor, okay.
Zach says four thirty-three occupancy, right?
Says four thirty-three?
That's occupancy, I think that's kind of like a occupancy load issue.
That's people, people in the building.
Okay, that's including staff. So this three hundred and sixty-three seats, eighty-six of which would be outdoor seats, so when that outdoor patio is not being used, you would have two hundred and eighty-something. Okay. Okay, so that's, that's fine. And everyone loves the idea of El Fresco dining, everyone loves it, I love it, I like to sit outside and eat. But if it has a roof and walls, it's not really outdoor seating. And I understand you're saying that most of the time, hopefully, those windows will be open. And if that's the case, I don't have a concern. My concern is that we have seen this happen before, where those walls get closed and then they're used. They bring out these little space heaters that are pretty easy to get now, that are tall, and it becomes a four-season out space and it's not even really an outdoor space anymore. It's not El Fresco dining, it's just a room with big windows. And I want to figure out how we can make sure that doesn't happen. I think having the windows for when it's raining, something like that, can make sense. But I don't want to see that become just like a solarium where people eat. So how do we address that?
I wanted to see what you thought of that. Well, if there's a wall in between it, there's no way to heat or cool inside. And there doesn't seem to be weather-tight windows.
So could we say something, could we put in the condition, for example, and I'm not, I'm just throwing this out there, so I haven't given it a lot of thinking, but that that area is not to be used for December, January, February, and that the windows are to remain open unless there is inclement weather. Does that sound reasonable?
How do you determine inclement weather, though?
I would actually trust them to determine inclement weather. The idea is just to communicate that most of the time it's open air and that it's not used in December, January, and February, because to do that, you would have to close the windows and add heating. Which is what they have done.
In the off-chance that we have a seventy-degree day, as we did a few weeks ago.
So do you, do you want to say, you know, if it's used more than five or six months out of the year, then they, if it's used more than six months out of the year, then we want to consider it more permanent space?
Or maybe what we say is.
I mean, if it's full, full-year-round space.
It should be, the windows should be open unless weather is inclement and you can't add heat. That would prevent you from having people seating out there in December, January, and February unless it was unusually warm.
When you say heat, so there may, in the roof, and Jennifer, we're talking about, I think the concept is that they would have some ceiling fans. I think the concept is that they would have some ceiling fans and they may have some, you know, radiant heating elements in the ceiling.
That's not outdoor seating.
Yeah. Well, it is in the.
That's increasing this footprint of the restaurant.
But.
So like in Dallas, we have a patio that looks just like this. And in the spring and the fall, we keep the heaters on and the windows open. You get the fresh air, but there's just a little radiant heat to keep you from feeling a chill.
That's what they're for.
The intent is that that heat is never going to allow you to go there tonight.
It won't come back freezing weather.
You understand what I'm trying to avoid?
Yeah.
Which is what I described at Redstone's where it was a patio and now it's a room. It's just a room with big windows and they use it year round. It's not outside dining.
Taverns have it too, I've seen it.
Yeah, so that's what I'm trying to avoid and I'm not sure how to get to it. I'd kind of like to work with you on that because I want to make sure that, I don't want to propose something that doesn't work for your business. But I also want to make sure that, that that's not, that this doesn't happen here as it has happened in other locations.
I'd say prohibit the heat. And then you can have the fan for the summer, which is great. And then the heat's going to get you, your, your, your fourth season, so.
Right.
Well, I, I, respectfully, I think that the, what Jennifer described, I think, is an important amenity for folks that are sitting out there. If it's a, a spring or, you know, fall day and, you know, they want that fresh air experience, but there's a little bit of heat coming off of the ceiling. I think it, it adds some comfort to people that are out there.
I, yeah, it's to add to that, I think it gets you that, I think it's the third season, but there's, I don't think there's anything out there besides.
Right.
Actually connecting to the store, the restaurant's HVAC system that will get you through the winter.
If that's the case, then close it for December, January, and February. And if there's one day in December where it's seventy degrees, you missed out on that one day.
So you're probably going to take the furniture out anyway, right? Oh, no, because you've got the walls and everything to be closed, so you may not.
I don't know if they'll take it.
I mean, if they're using it year round, they need to come back if.
If they use it three sixty-four?
I mean, if they use it four seasons, it's indoor space. But, I mean, I will say.
That's what I'm trying to avoid.
Right, and that's, we have a condition if they use it, or I don't know if we have, we've been talking about a condition. But I will say it's not like they're in here asking for forgiveness on parking ratios. They've fully, fully, fully incorporated all of the seats into the.
Right.
Parking that they need, as well as all of the seats, if you remember with Pat, Patrick Dunford, the traffic engineer, you know, there's a wonderful spreadsheet that there's all this deduction of seats for, you know, in the traffic review, we had X amount of seats and, you know, this is minus those seats. So all of these seats, whether inside or outside, have been accounted for in terms of parking and traffic.
I understand that.
But that was different than what we had a conversation with at Paparazzi and the tavern. So I just wanted to point that out as to, we were very concerned in those places because of the.
Parking.
The seasonal part, the parking seasonal seats, kind of giving forgiveness for those. Whereas this location, they've accounted for every, every seat in those ratios. So just in terms of concern, if they have them or don't have them.
Right now, the way it is, it's not four seasons, it's three seasons. How do we police that? How do we control that? Wouldn't it just be easier to say three seasons, just the, the fourth season is December, January, and February? You can't use it then. That just seems more clear cut.
I think it's easier, it's easier to patrol, or patrol to.
Control.
Control. I think it's easier if you just, yeah, if you just say something like that. If it's, you can't open and close the window, even who's going to know if they.
And that's what I would, I'm proposing, I'd like to hear what the applicant and what the rest of the board members think about that.
If I could, I, I think that, I, I hear what you're saying, there's no intent to be using that in the, in the winter months. I think if we're going to have a rare week where in December, you're going to have four days of. As oddly as we did last, this past December, we had two or three consecutive days. You know, they may want to try to use it a little bit, you know, but I, to the extent that the board would be comfortable, I think we could live with a condition that there's no connectivity to the HVAC system of the, of the building itself or the restaurant itself. So that the only heat element that would be out there would be that that would be derived from, you know, a ceiling radiant heat, which just isn't going to do anything to allow for someone to be comfortable out there, you know, this week, you know, so that's.
So on those odd days, and who knows with global warming, maybe they'll be more frequent. Would those doors, will those windows be open or closed? Because if it's closed and the heat's on, it's a room.
I don't think we'd be seating in this type of weather patio here or no.
I know not when it's freezing cold.
You know, we, we'd probably keep them open.
I meant on those unusual days that occur.
And part of the, part of our marketing effort is being able to see people inside the restaurant enjoying themselves and seeing the market fresh table and the, the meat's grilling. So those will stay open most of the time because that's when you can see the activity in the restaurant and be hard to see through that into the restaurant. So I, I really don't anticipate using those a great deal unless we have a windy day.
No one ever does anticipate using them year round and yet it happens. We've mentioned three instances of it in Burlington alone. I'm not trying to be difficult, I want to make sure that this can work for you. I think that it's reasonable to say either you don't use it December, January, February, or you don't have heat, any kind of heat.
The other difference here between Tavern in the Square and this particular restaurant is that these are sliding glass doors that go past each other and so there's a big air gap there. Whereas at Tavern in the Square, it's a zip, it's, it's a very different system that's much more airtight than this.
Can I ask for a point of clarification or information? Because I, I know I'm going to get a telephone call that says, why do you care if they've got enough parking? So can I ask through you, ask staff what the difference is between the inside and the outside seats? Why, why are we concerned about it?
Okay.
Can you answer that? In other words, why?
Well, I was just trying to outline why we were very much concerned in the past about.
Because we had parking, there was limited parking areas. You're talking Paparazzi and the old Paparazzi.
Right, and the tavern, I mean, the kind of the smaller parking area. So here, whether it's a two hundred and seventy-seven or three sixty-three.
Yeah, okay.
It doesn't really matter, I guess, because we understand how it's parked. It's just, we just want to have just an understanding of overall what, what is the impact. The impact has been accounted for, I guess. Whereas if it was in the other location, it was a concern because it hadn't been accounted for. Here, it, it has been. So if, I mean, unless they come in later and say, oh, well, those are just patio seats, let's have more seats. Well, no, no, right now, these are full seats, full time.
Right.
And they're having them as patio.
And we have the parking for it right now.
And we have, and they're, and they have them within the parking count. If that wasn't the case, I would be saying all the same things I would have said at Tavern.
So I, I, so I guess that's the question I'm getting, is why do you care?
You're asking, why do I care?
Well.
No, not you, I mean, why?
Can I add one more thing?
I can answer.
One more thing. So if they become total internal seats, it just changes the internal square footage of the mall and we just want to understand that.
Okay, alright.
So.
Right, so that's my concern.
And again, not because it hasn't been accounted, it's just if the mall inside is X square feet and now they have these full-time HVAC used in every single month of the year, we just want to understand that and understand that as the total square footage impact of the mall on this side.
Okay, so it's.
So there's that concern and then my additional concern is I think that this vision is lovely and that's what we want. We want El Fresco dining, we want people to enjoy dining outside. And what I don't want to see happen is what happened at Redstone where it's closed in and it's almost never opened.
There's no, no dining outside.
And it's, it's, it's pretty much like a, a solarium where people eat and it's not El Fresco dining anymore. They just closed it up. And that's not what I, that's not what, it says, you're telling me that's not what you want? That's not what we want either. And I just want to make sure that doesn't happen.
I mean, we could look at, we could say in six months, we can take a look at, we can have them come in and just talk about how it's being used. Or submit to some, submit us something on how it's being used.
I think your, your, your best protection is to have a provision that it can't be, that area can't be incorporated into the heating system, cooling system for the restaurant itself because the sliding, as Jennifer's indicated, they're not seal tight. So that even if they're slid, I mean, there's gaps there, it's really just to, you know, shut the wind down. If someone's sitting and they're having dinner and all of a sudden there's, you know, you're in a, a wind tunnel of some degree, which, you know, can happen out there. I mean, I'm working in the park next to it.
Kristen, where in here does it say three season only?
Uh, it has, we haven't said total three season. It says it in Liz's notebook, please add this condition.
Okay. Maybe that would make me feel better.
In the future, if the pa, if it's, in future, if it's fully enclosed.
No, it says something in the special permit. I did, I did make a note, three six, I said interior seats, a certain number of interior seats and a certain number of patio seats. So to specify that.
So maybe we need to just beef that up a little bit and make it clear that these are three season seats, open whenever weather permits.
And closing, closed off only when there's inclement weather. And we would leave it to your discretion as to what is inclement.
Well, and we also want to add if ever permanently, if ever permanently added HVAC and fully incorporated into the restaurant. You need to come back for a.
Okay. Sounds like I'm probably the only board member who has this concern. So I'm, I'm amenable to just accepting that. If someone else has other concerns, let me know.
Just one more question as I look at the plan. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I, I do agree with you there with, with the concern. There's, there's a note on here about this thing called a nano wall folding door. And it's pointing to two black, something, doors, it's a, it's a folding glass door, like partitioned. Is, that's not the same thing that you're talking about the windscreen, right? I'm looking at the furniture plan A two dot O three.
Whereabouts on the plan?
If you, if you can, is, is there?
If you look just, just, well, and not like this is south-north, but if you look just south of where the main grill is, it says nano wall folding doors or equivalent.
This guy right now, I can't read that.
It's two black things, yeah.
Okay, I see it now.
So that looks to me like more of a, a sealed glass wall versus an opening. And I'm trying to see where that's located and what's this doing for you there?
So during the summer months, if the health department will allow us, we'd like to have one of those folding doors that open the restaurant to the outside.
Okay.
In its entirety.
So it goes all the way across that area and it's the only one? It's not the one over to the east side or to the second?
That's the only one.
Adjacent to the dining patio.
That would be nice.
But they might not be able to do it with the Board of Health and the salad bar.
Yeah, because of salad bar.
We're going to go through the.
Oh, okay.
The paces of seeing if they'll allow us to do that, that might, you know, might not happen.
Maybe they just make you move the salad bar further away.
So.
That's not up to me, I'm just.
Let me, maybe there's, because I, I just happened to catch this. When you meet with the Board of Health, would they know to ask that or are you going to bring it to their attention? Or maybe there's something from the staff and I'll wait till they're done there.
What are we making?
Wait to, so.
Application to the board?
Yeah, specifically for, so I think maybe the staff wants to send a note to the Board of Health to say.
Yeah, we can ask a question. They have not concluded with the Board of Health, so.
Okay, and you just.
But one of the board health conditions, proposed food establishments must undergo a plan review.
Yeah, well, that's fine. So I, so I didn't know what a nano wall was, I'll have to look it up right here. So maybe just with a note to the, to the, the health department that the nano wall, because it's, there are only two little.
Yeah, it's fine.
I'll show, I'll show you what I'm hearing. Two little black lines, which doesn't, when I interpreted that, that, I didn't know what that was, if it was going to be a wall. So they only point the arrows to the two little black things. If, if the idea of that wall is a, is a bifold wall that extends all the way out here, that's something that should be.
Called veritation.
Described specifically to the, to the, the health department so they understand what that is versus it not necessarily being spelled out. We've, we've gotten in trouble before with things aren't spelled out in definitions and things like that. So maybe if the staff can send something to the Board of Health that says, please note this goes across the entire way and it's a bifolding door that would open up the entire restaurant. Thank you.
Okay. So, so we can make that notation here that it's three season. We're going to give that information to the Board of Health.
So the tables got to come out of the way.
I don't think there's anyone in the audience to ask questions. Does anyone on the board have any additional questions? No, okay. And we've agreed that you're going to come back at a separate time to talk about the outdoor areas, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, we can figure out what the right timing is from that and you can work with staff to do that. Okay, thank you. All right. I think we're good.
I think I'm open to close the public hearing on this one?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seven zero.
I'll make a motion to approve the request of Fogo de Chao LLC for a special permit pursuant to section four point two point six point ten restaurants of the Burlington zoning bylaw to permit a three hundred and sixty-three seat full-service restaurant at seventy-five Middle Sixth Turnpike, the Burlington Mall, subject to the terms, conditions contained in exhibit A attached and as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, seven zero.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close item seven B for the site plan, close the public hearing on this matter.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seven zero.
Just like to make a motion to approve the request of the approval for a site plan application of Fogo de Chao Burlington LLC for property located at seventy-five Middle Sixth Turnpike, Burlington Mall to occupy tenant space with a partially enclosed patio, relocated access egress doors, a newly designed facade reflected on redlined site plan proposed Fogo de Chao five Burlington Mall Road, eleven hundred Middle Sixth Turnpike, Burlington, Massachusetts, prepared by Van Ass, Hangan, Bruston Incorporated, dated January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, consisting of three pages reflecting thirteen thousand thirty-nine square feet, three hundred and sixty-three interior and eighty-six patio dining seats, subject to the following revisions, terms, and conditions.
So it's three sixty-three including.
Including eighty-six patio dining.
Including eighty, eighty-six patio dining seats, subject to the.
Yep.
Following revisions, terms, conditions, as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, seven zero. So when do you think you'll open?
We are submitting a building permit next week. So as soon as we can get a building permit, we'll get started.
Welcome and good luck.
Maybe by fall.
Okay, great.
Fall.
Happy to have you.
Thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
After the sidewalk, if it's fall.
After the sidewalk, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're taking my.
Thank you.
All right.
Guys need to go to PG.
Yes, so I know you all think we're done, but we have lots of discussion items, so you.
Well, they're not, they're not long.
They won't be long.
Almost set a new record, almost.
So it's budget time. The budget's in the front pocket of your book. We have held, for the most part, everything standard. We have minor changes with the change to Liz moving, well, actually, Liz moving up didn't change us very much. The assistant planner, did we start one? I think we started one step down from where Liz was. So it changed just slightly. Otherwise, we held everything the same. We combined a few things just for ease. And we have a one point seven six percent projected budget. The quest, one of the questions we have in this budget that is the last thing on this list, but it's a budget, so I might as well just bring it up now. There was some talk, all of the, all of, the last time we received iPads for the planning board was iPad two point oh, way back when. And we, so we've been working with IT to figure out what's the schedule. They, they have some boards on like a schedule for update. They pretty much said to us, well, you, we're never on the schedule originally, so we're, you're still not on the schedule, so you don't have an update schedule. So they could get us a couple a year moving forward. But if we wanted to get all seven, that we'd need to take on part of that in our budget. So that's a question for all of you. I can probably get, what was it, three?
Three or four this year.
Yeah, I think we could ask IT for three or four this year.
Three or four this year in their budget.
So why would we ask who on the board really wants a new one?
The next year, but if they want it all seven, I need to put a line in.
Okay, who on the board really wants a new iPad? Mike?
Sure.
Okay, let's ask for three.
Well, they said they could accommodate it three or four, so in their budget, so I don't need to affect my budget.
We'll take whatever they can put in their budget.
Okay, I just didn't want to, you know, have three and then the rest of you, whereas. Okay. I just didn't wanna, you know, have three and then the rest of you. Where's mine?
Yeah, we'll take whatever we got. Whatever it is, we'll take it.
All right. I'll see whatever. Otherwise, um, if anyone has any questions about the budget, I'm happy to talk about it. We are up in front of Ways and Means in March. I, I, March twenty-fourth, maybe? Our Ways and Means Subcommittee, it says on the sheet we're Brad Bond and Tom Killey. However, someone said it might be Sonia and Tom Killey. I'm not sure. I, I'm checking with, with Roger Riggs for clarification.
So is it definitely March twenty-fourth? Or you would need to get back to me about that?
I will tell you if I do. And I'll put it on my calendar too.
I just had a quick question here. Maybe it's, I can't talk about this in public, but I look at the, the salaries.
I'm sorry, twenty-five. March twenty-fifth, seven o'clock.
We don't want to talk too much about salaries.
Right, right. Not with numbers, but with regard to, you know, uh, you know, the, the, no, the, the planners versus, you know, the support staff there. It just seems.
Well, you have, I mean, you have a twenty-plus-year employee as support staff and a out-of-college first-level grad. Um, so.
Yeah, still, that still seems out of reach. I mean, just if, where I look from an industry standpoint, it would be very.
There, there, there.
Oh, is that where that works? Okay.
Yeah. So, um, if you looked at it kind of in a more, a lesser amount of years, um, I think you would see that it would look more even, but, um, I don't know. I, I don't know what I would do without our support staff, so I want to make sure. And they're not, you know, they're not really getting paid.
Are all four union?
Uh-huh.
Are these all four union?
No, just one. The only union is, um,
Oh, I didn't know.
The administrative assistant. The rest of us are an A and P.
Brenda has a question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, please, go ahead, please. I'm just putting in that meeting. For current versus requested.
Oh, uh, oh, if you, yeah, so the way our old one was, they had it, so if you look at it, the way it was listed, there is a typo.
Okay.
That's why it says eight hundred in the second line, because that person moved to it. Anyway, whatever.
I just wanted to point that out.
Yep. The number itself is exactly the same, but yes. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Do you have a start date for Brady?
Brady's starting on February twenty-fourth. We'll let you know, so you can all come in and sit with him and say hello. Okay. Yes, we're very excited. He's starting February twenty-fourth. He is all set. He's accepted. He's all set. He's done all the paperwork, so looking for someplace to live. He has his email. He has a phone number.
If I may, I, I thought of, as we've been talking about how we monitor what's going on, uh, from his interview and so forth, I would say anybody that could be on RA or whatever, for a room full of, for, for, for a dorm full of freshmen, certainly can take whatever he needs to be able to, to go and do on-site for us. And I would, I, I, I would like to give him that opportunity, which he might like to do. Because some people like to sit in an office and some like to get out once in a while.
Yeah, we, we have, there's a few things that we specifically wanted. I mean, as you know, you, you have a certain team and you match the team and.
Sure.
Um, for this particular round, the, a couple of things we wanted to focus on. One, follow-up from approval, um, which in general, um, but also trying to be out in the field a lot more. And one of the reasons why we hired him was we felt that he was able to handle himself with many, multiple different personalities um, in a myriad of situations. So, um, and we felt comfortable with his personality to, maybe not on the first day, but in general, sending him out in the field alone and being able to handle himself. So we hope we were right. But that is definitely something.
Oh, I wouldn't be worried.
That'd be great if we can get him out, out there to do inspections.
Do we have any more questions about the budget, though?
Nope.
Okay. So we're gonna meet on, you said March twenty-fourth?
Fifth.
Twenty-fifth?
Sorry, I got it confused with the.
And what time is that?
Well, it starts at seven.
Oh, seven. Okay.
But the Subcommittee, I don't have a date yet. Let me, I'll let you know.
Do you want a motion to?
Oh, okay.
Do you want a motion to approve the budget or?
To accept the budget.
I need you to.
Yes.
Yes, you're.
Yes, please.
Make a motion to approve the FY twenty twenty-one budget as submitted with one, uh,
Typo.
Typo change.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, seven zero. Thank you. Um, okay. Zoning warrant articles for May.
So these, and these are up for discussion with the board. So, um, the first one, uh, the town clerk, Amy Warfield, has brought up to us, and it's actually a pretty simple change. Since we've gone to electronic permitting, we still have some requirements in our bylaw that outline all the paper permitting. So people have kind of said to us, well, if we don't do all the stuff in the bylaw and we only do electronic. Yeah, so we kind of have this, do these duplicate efforts. So we just need to correct, it's housekeeping. Just need to correct that. So that's one thing that we want to submit. And the second one was a question on, you guys have done a lot of work on short-term rentals. And we have discussed with council if it's possible to prohibit, um, well, we've talked it a couple of different ways. And I know you guys have talked about, you know, do you allow it and regulate it? But since it seems like there's just a lot of things to understand, but there's also a lot of things going on. You know, as a, a measure for now, would it be something that we might be interested in prohibiting them in the RO district? Or potentially a bunch of districts, um, as we continue to explore what, what to do. So.
I thought we already did that.
We haven't actually done it.
It hasn't gone to town meeting.
So what it would entail would be, you need to accept the definition that the state has for short-term rentals, put that in the use table, and then figure out across the board how you want to permit it. You should allow it somewhere. Um, we've talked to.
I second that.
We have this.
You have to allow somewhere. I mean, other, other towns have.
To pass AG, they want you to.
Well, so my, my thought on that is, and we've had some
You could try.
Discussion on that is that there are towns that have already prohibited, which would have had to pass the AG.
So, yeah, I mean, we can, we can submit it as a total prohibition if they come back and say, and that was talked about at ZBRC. Like just pass it as a total prohibition. If they come back and say, hey, you need to put it somewhere, then we'll figure out where to put it.
Can we look at the towns that have prohibited and see where that is in the, use the exact same language?
The war- yes, the warrant is due next Tuesday, so our feeling was to submit something with the definition, the use table, and if this board wants to prohibit it across the board for now and figure that out.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Who says we have to permit it?
Well, the AG in the past has said, if you're gonna actually add the use to prohibit it, you should, or per, you should permit, if you add a use, you should permit it somewhere. But it might, again, as said before, sometimes it is passed, so let's just try it. And if they come back and say you need to permit it somewhere, then we'll.
And was this the state?
The Attorney General.
Quick question on that one, Madam Chair. Um, I know this board voted seven zero to prohibit. I know the last we had it, we were waiting on ZBRC to kind of touch on it one more time. Do you know what happened in the last meeting when they talked about it?
They, they support us putting it together and they support across the board.
Okay.
Pro, prohibit.
Prohibit across the board. Yeah, I was at ZBRC last night. Um, with an understanding of continued dialogue about it, but.
Sure, we'll dialogue forever.
But we don't have.
Perfect for you.
I don't think we need dialogue. I think we just need you to put the language.
But you're gonna see what happens.
So.
And then we'll vote on the language.
Yes. Okay. We don't need a vote. We just need support.
Let's do it. Okay.
Okay.
Capital items. Um, actually, is D under here in the wrong place?
Yep.
Okay. Can we take D first, just because I think it's really easy?
Yeah, so D is not a capital item whatsoever. It's actually, should be interesting, a, uh, interesting Board of Appeals filings that came in. It should be under. Um, one twenty-one Lexington Street was the, um, section six finding special permit for the historic house that, um, has a failing roof. Um, but anyway, so they have submitted to the Board of Appeals a variance request because they don't have two hundred feet of frontage. So the request is, do you remember?
I don't know the exact number, but they want, they are.
No, let's say, I think it's like seventy and seventy. I mean, they have, they, I don't know, I want to say they have like a hundred and fifty. So it's.
Yeah, they don't.
You know, it's not like ten. It's, you know, it's something.
How big?
Something in that vicinity. So we just wanted to bring it to your attention that that was happening, and they're looking to split that site into potentially two building lots.
Do we, do we, remember how large the piece of property itself is? Do you remember?
The lot, they have the lot area for two building lots. They just don't have the frontage.
So they have at least forty thousand square feet.
Yes, yes.
They have forty thousand square feet of uplet, but they do not have two hundred feet of frontage.
And I do know that, um, the neighbors that we've spoken with would, they, they expressed that they would prefer to see single-family homes in this location as opposed to condos or something like that. So personally, I have no problem with this. I don't know if anyone else on the board is concerned.
They probably want to get rid of that eyesore too.
There have been trucks down in there. I'll go by in the morning.
Yeah, the parking of demolition, like a dumpster truck yesterday.
So does anyone have any concerns they want to express, or should we just? All right.
Okay. Capital cra- requests. Um, so we have talked about this in the past. Um, wireless is awesome when it comes in. Um, I don't know, we've just been feeling lately, especially, we haven't done a townwide wireless review since nineteen ninety-six. We've been doing piecemeal reviews. And there's been a lot of changes in law. There's been a lot of changes in technology. And I, and I've been debating if I'm gonna split it into two pieces. I mean, we need a legal review of our wireless overlay district. That is absolute. But on the other side of it, I think we also want to gain an understanding of what is the infrastructure out there? What do we have out there? What are we gonna expect to see? And I know we talked a little bit about it at the Z, uh, zoning bylaw review last night. And it was like, well, we don't, no one really knows what's gonna happen with 5G. I mean, I'm not looking for this kind of pie in the sky. So I think we need to figure out a little bit more of the scope. And I know Brenda and Ernie were, um, hopeful or wanted to be on kind of a committee to help me figure this out. But we're looking at, with a couple of other departments, to put a capital request in to definitely take a look at, you know, our bylaw, the legal aspects of our bylaw and the more recent, or since two thousand twelve and more recent, um, federal, local law, or state law. And then the second piece of just infrastructure, what, what is it? So.
So what do you need from us?
We just need your support that we will be working on that.
Okay.
You have my support. I think it definitely needs to be done, and I'm very relieved that Brenda and Ernie want to help. I don't.
The second piece, um, there has been, and these are things that aren't just, um, we will bring them up because we're involved and we want the board always to know what, you know, to kind of sign off on how we're spending our time. The second is the sign bylaw. Um, there's been me and Sally Willard met and others met yesterday about the sign bylaw. The building departments brought it up. The, um, Chamber of Commerce has brought it up. We've tried in-house three times in the last over thirty years. And we just felt that the right way to do it was think about bringing in a consultant to help manage that and facilitate that process as well as bring in ideas, uh, moving forward. So that's the other piece that if other bodies feel they want to help us, not help us, it's pretty much, I don't mind writing the capital request, but it's a lot of other people who really need to drive the bus on it. Um, so.
Can I?
And I'm not driving the bus for the sign bylaw consultant. Somebody else can do that, but I'm happy to move, start things rolling.
Okay.
Can, can I just, uh, since it's relevant, uh, the zoning bylaw review committee set up a subcommittee to kind of deal, try and deal with signs again.
Yes.
And, um, so far, it's Sally Wood, myself, Betsy Hughes, Mike Murray from the Board of Appeals, and, uh.
He'd be a good one to drive the bus.
Mike?
Maybe, yeah.
You like driving buses? Oh, okay.
I'll just, I need, I need, you know, we'll see.
And it was, we just met for the first time yesterday, just on basically an organizational type thing as to what we wanted to try and do and, uh, what was a realistic time slot for it. And, and I, I guess Sally is interested in maybe giving a little report to town meeting on, on, uh, in May as to where we're going and maybe have something concrete for September. Not for the whole, not for the whole sign bylaw.
Section by section.
Yeah, section by district. And probably going, as Kristen had suggested, geographical instead of by zoning districts. So you would have a sign overlay District One, and it might be in a few various places.
We'd have signed corridors. This kind of was the concept.
But anyhow, I just wanted to let you know that there is progress. Meetings are probably going to continue being at eight o'clock in the morning. And, uh, once or twice a month. And I'll make sure that everybody knows about them.
Well, Ernie, do you think that committee wants to take, I mean, I, I'm only here because I'm listening to other people and I'm putting other capital requests together and they're, I, I mean, there needs to be a lot more backup, and I think that committee and others might help to.
As far as backup for the request, you, is up to me?
Well, I mean, you, I can put in the request and then, then as we move through it, we need, as with wireless, we need to continue to get backup for town meeting before we get to town meeting. But, um, we should work with that committee to figure out how to move it forward. I'm
Sure.
I'm just a willing participant to put paperwork together at this point.
Yeah, the, the people involved right now seem to be willing to dedicate the amount of time it's going to take to do it.
It's a good group. So if you could, um, I do think it would be ni- nice, helpful if you could just inform this group whenever there's a meeting in case people can come.
Oh, sure, sure. Definitely.
I don't know how many of them will be able to come, but it's always nice to be invited.
Are they always at eight AM?
It looks like they're, well, actually, there was some discussion about the fact that if they're always at eight AM, it might preclude some people from being there. So that, that, I guess, finalized it. As far as I'm concerned, the later the better. I don't know.
Okay.
Um, so the last item, um, so we've really been trying to figure out, and I give a lot of credit to Melissa Tantakolas. As you know, um, since the fiftieth anniversary of the Burlington Mall in two thousand eighteen, we've been like, okay, Macy's now is ready to be engaged. They've, in the past, said, you know, this is an important piece of property for us, um, but we're not ready yet. And I think they're getting ready. Simon is starting to complete this phase. So the time is really beginning to be right to really figure out what's next. So we're just, and I don't know if this is, I don't know if, how we may or may not be part of a potential consultant for the Mall Road rezoning. Um, what we did talk about, I met with Paul and Melissa, and, um, Liz came with me yesterday, to talk about how much of a part do we want to be in this? And, you know, we don't want them to go off and make a plan and come back and we just react to it. We want to be central to it. So what does that mean in terms of our role and, you know, our commitment and potentially funding to because it might be something that we move forward with, or the selectmen might, or the, um, the town administration might bring something like this forward as well. But it's definitely something in the works. Um, the meeting we had yesterday was great, just with the four of us, um, to talk through it. But I think it's, I, I, I think it'll be a great process. We just want to make sure we, we've positioned ourselves with others so it's not, we react to something that we're creating something together.
That's what I'm really happy to hear, because I think it is important, it's such an important property in town. And I don't want to see us only reacting to what they propose. I'd like us to be involved earlier on in the process so that the town can express what the town's needs and hopes and are for the property as well and, and actually be involved in the planning process. So I, I fully support that.
Yep, yeah. And we know, you know, we know it's not gonna be easy. I mean, you have two major competing retailers at the table at the same time. And, you know, nobody, nobody wants to show their cards. So it's, it's a process that I think is important to try to develop how we're gonna do this. So. So anyway, that's, that's it. That's.
Anyone have any other questions about that?
The mall is the mall as it is now. They're spending a lot of money on the mall building and everything that's going on there. And we're talking about rezoning the mall?
Um, I don't think it's necessarily rezoning. You're just sort of trying to figure out what is the future for the mall. And we have indication from the mall that they want to change things and may want to do some rezonings. We just sort of want to be involved in the process early on so that.
We have to be.
So what we do know.
No, they could come to us with a fully formed plan and just say, you say yes or no. We'd like to be involved early in the process.
And what we do know is we're over-retailed and there's going, the retail portion, I mean, what is it? And what we do know is we're over-retailed, and there's going, the retail portion, which is in a million square, as you're saying, there's more restaurants now, but you're gonna, I think we're gonna continue to see that footprint change, so what are those other uses that go in? And BG's pretty limiting to, you know, restaurants, retail, small, like smaller office, but, you know, it doesn't allow for some other type of, of uses that we're seeing in, in certain areas.
We're not suggesting rezoning against their will.
Are they proposing, uh, looking to do anything that needs rezoning from us?
Yes.
You know, I don't mind soaring sodas, sometimes it's fun, got nothing to do, and, but, you know, if, there's no reason to rezonate.
They do want to do things that would require a zoning.
So, so they've, they wanna do some things, and so we have, do we have to do a new section for a, a zone or a permitted use?
I don't think we know.
But that's what we're working on. But there are things that, that we've talked about that we, as a, from a planning perspective, we support as good complementary uses to move forward that aren't allowed. There's other uses that have been brought up that we've said, I don't know. But, you know, in terms of the toolbox and what uses move forward, I think we should be considering a larger box.
The only thing I could think of down there is possibly housing. And what are the use?
What do we, what are you thinking of?
You have housing, you have hotel, you have conference center, you have entertainment uses. You know, our entertainment use is like ice skating rinks and gyms and like dance halls. I mean, that's what it says in our bylaw.
Dance halls?
But, right, no, but it's, but, you know, but more
Who's the dance hall?
Fitness, fitness, you can have, for fitness, you can have a 2,500-square-foot fitness center, that, that's what you can have. You can't have a gym, you can't have
We're already doing fitness in the mall.
More than 20, you, you can't, you know
You were doing fitness in the mall.
No, every morning, there's, there's a group of women with kids. They were down in front of what was Sears, now they're down in front of Lord Taylor's.
Right, but if they wanted a space, it can only be this teeny-tiny, so it, it's just these types of, you know, if you wanted to have an additional hotel type of use, the height in BG is 30 feet, you can't.
Seriously?
They're just doing it on the green space when they open it, right?
Yeah, they have their own kids are running around, and the women are doing all the gymnastics and so forth, and, yeah, they're there for like an hour. I had a feeling that there was a woman, this kind, a woman that appears to be in charge, but I didn't know whether it was commercial or what, and something was never allowed before.
I think it's just a group of friends.
They run around and jog with their, with their strollers.
They just grab their yoga mats and go.
And they really move.
Do you race?
Oh, can't catch them.
Yeah, no, but
Yeah, we don't know, we don't know all the answers.
The number one thing that puts people over 60 years in the hospital, I'm telling you this, 'cause you'll be over that age
I don't wanna hear it.
Is falls.
Falling?
Falls, okay, good.
Falls, and the number one puts here, and if one of those women hits you with a stroller, I'm, I'm, I'm just, some of the people really move, some jog and
You're right, Paul, my dad is 86, and his doctor told him at his last appointment, you're in great health, you're doing terrific. I have one word of advice for you, if you wanna live to be 100, don't fall.
Yeah, that's the first thing I'd say.
Walk and don't fall.
All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned, thank you.